Good evening and welcome to the June 14th meeting of the Manhattan City Commission. This is a work session. Oh, and we're four commissioners are here and a fifth commissioner is John, is that John Mata, is joining us via Zoom. So if you'd join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and justice for all.
Okay, the item for discussion this evening is the 2023 budget overview with a year-to-date analysis, general fund review, capital improvements program, revenue neutral rate, debt portfolio with major projects, ARPA, revenue loss strategy, and upcoming budget schedule. And I would say that Rena Neal is here to make this presentation.
Along with Rebecca Doling. Good evening.
Okay, Rebecca Doling, okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Good evening. Tonight I will be providing the update as of the first four months of 2022, and then Rebecca will come forward to provide an update on how we will proceed with the 2023 budget process. The city has seven major revenue sources. Tonight we are highlighting the first six on this PowerPoint. We will present information on the utility charges in a future revenue work session on utilities. Of those six, we are only focusing on the general fund. And again, we will highlight special liquor tax as well as our transient guest taxes as they have impacted outside agencies over the past few years. We will present outside agency information on June 28th. The first slide is related to our general fund and the sales taxes within that general fund. The general fund has a 2022 budget of $34.4 million. Our major revenue source is sales taxes. It comprises 23% of the total budget, and that is about $7.8 million. As of April, sales taxes up 10% and compared to the year-to-date in 2021, and as well as 12% compared to 2019. It remarks that we are one-third of the year complete, and we have collected 38% of the budgeted sales taxes in the general fund. Property taxes comprise about 11% of the general fund budget. In 2002, we budgeted $3.9 million or an equivalent of $6.59 mils. We've received major distributions in June, January and June, excuse me. As of April, we have collected 57% of the budgeted property taxes. Last week, we received our June distributions, which brings our collection to 97% of the budgeted property taxes for the year. Franchise fees is our third largest revenue source in the general fund, comprising 9% of the total revenue. The 2022 budget was $2,964,000. Franchise fees are up 10% compared to 2021 and 24% compared to 2019. As of April, we have collected 40% of the budgeted franchise fee revenue. Our legal department and the seated managers' office review our franchise fee agreements to ensure that the companies are adhering to the requirements of their agreement and those rates that we are supposed to collect. Our next tax that we're going to highlight, our revenue we're going to highlight is our compensating use tax. That comprises 3% of the general fund revenues. For 2022, we budgeted $970,000. Our use taxes up 26% compared to 2021 and 86% compared to 2019. Special liquor tax is a revenue that we like to review each year because its impact on not only the special alcohol fund, but also the general fund and special parks and recreation fund. And again, in the past few years, because of the pandemic, those revenues have not been coming in at what was budgeted. The special liquor tax not only covers outside agencies and their needs, but also general services as well. The total special liquor tax is divided into thirds and credited to the general fund, special parks and recreation fund, and the special alcohol fund. Our year-to-date 2022 special liquor received was $475,893, which is an increase of 68% over 2021 and a 12% increase from 2019. In 2020, there was a shortfall due to the pandemic, and only 75% of the budgeted amount was collected in 2021, excuse me, in 2020. And then in 2021, that was 97%. The total budgeted amount for 2022 is $1.395 million. As of April, we have collected about 34%, which makes us on target for those collections for the year. We are estimating that we are going to collect on target for our special liquor tax for 2022.
Rena, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is it a state mandate that it's divided those three ways, or is that a city thing?
It's a state mandate.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next tax that we review each year is our transient guest tax. And again, that is as a result of the pandemic. And those funds are received into our tourism and convention fund, and they are used to pay for some outside agencies, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, as well as debt on some major improvements that attract visitors to Manhattan. The 2022 budgeted transient guest tax revenue was close to $1.8 million. To date, we have collected $646,295 in revenue, which is 36% of the budget. As of April, transient guest tax is up 93% compared to 2021 and 17% compared to 2019 at this same time. We received the second quarter allocation from the state in May and have distributed all budgeted amounts to the chamber, as well as to the various agencies that receive those allocations. For a couple of years or more, we have been highlighting the need to monitor cash balances, in particular, the general fund and bond and interest fund due to government finance officer association's best practices and the impact they have on our bond ratings. It is recommended that our general fund has a balance of $8 to $10 million, which is based on three months of the general fund's annual budget. We began the 2022 year with a balance of $8.5 million, which is the closest we have ever been to that recommendation from GFOWA. This is due to the various federal funds we have received as a result of the pandemic and departmental savings. We have set an internal target balance of $9.5 million, and we continue to monitor our revenues and expenditures each month with the various departments. This slide just is a pie chart of all of the major general fund revenues. Sales tax is number one. Next, we have our cash balance, and that was reflected on the prior screen. Next, then after that is our franchise fees, excuse me, our property taxes, and then our franchise fees. And then we also have transfers in there, and our transfers come from our utility funds. And then we also have compensating use tax included in there as well. And those six revenues make up 82% of the general fund revenues. This slide is just a snapshot of April 2021 compared to April 2022 and how much revenue we have received. Total for 2021 was $11,79,000, and for 2022, $11,455,000. To date, we have collected 3.4% more in general fund revenues compared to April of 2021. And that's just mainly comprised of our franchise fees as well as our sales tax and compensating use tax. You will also see on the screen that our recreation programs have started to fill back up in terms of those revenue fees coming in.
Before you go on, can I ask just one, compensating use tax. I think some of the folks out watching this may not understand what that is.
So compensating use tax?
Yeah, so what's that source? That's internet sales?
Yes, internet sales.
Okay, and that just seems to me always to be a strange term. We put compensating use tax, and people don't know what it is. And it's essentially, we're collecting sales tax on internet sales. And you can see the massive increase in that, so that's a very positive thing.
And it also includes in there, if you go and buy a vehicle in one county, and then you need to pay the sales tax in the respective county where you register. So it includes that as well.
Thank you.
You can also order furniture at Nebraska Furniture Mart and have it delivered to your house. We collect compensating use on that. It's another example of how previously that's really what compensating use was, when you would have that item delivered to your home, even though it was from a store outside of town.
But the good news is, you know, we're capturing those internet sales, and that's where the big increase is.
Our next slide is related to our general fund expenditures. We have nine departments in the general fund. This slide provides a snapshot of how we have spent as of April 2022 compared to April of 2021. We have an increase of $122,000 due to efforts to rehire and resume pre-pandemic program and service levels. Other $34.4 million, 26% has been expensed as of April, which is less than the 33% target budget as of April. Next, I will turn it over to Rebecca Doling, our budget officer. She will present the 2023 to 2027 capital improvement program. Included in your packet was a detailed listing of that program for 2023 to 2027. Our various departments within the organization spent months compiling the information to be presented to you all this evening. She will also present the revenue neutral rate based on the preliminary valuation information we received from both counties on Monday. Also included in the last part of this presentation is information we've already presented back in February, but just wanted to highlight again our Big Five projects, as well as where we are debt-wise with our debt capacity. And then also just an update on ARPA in terms of how we would like to move forward with the spending of those additional dollars. So Rebecca will come forward.
Okay, I will go ahead and address some of the changes and improvements we made to our capital improvement program for the 23 through 27 capital improvement program. Last year, the organization, the community, and you all went through a strategic planning process. Everybody had input in regards to, you know, what should be the focus moving forward for the city in terms of projects, spending, all of that. So once the actual strategic plan came out, we wanted to take steps to align our capital improvement program to kind of work together with that strategic plan. One of the ways that we did that is internally, we established a committee that was made up of each of the various different departments within the organization that provides projects into that capital improvement program, get their feedback on it. We also made some overall criteria changes as to what would be considered capital improvement from the city's standpoint. We indicated that projects only over 50,000 would be considered in the actual improvement program. We did take out vehicles and equipment from that criteria in terms of being included in that, as that's going to be addressed separately in a new internal service fund, as well as the removal of IT. Anything associated with IT came out of our capital improvement and is going to be addressed via an internal service fund. So what we first decided to do with the committee was to align the project criteria with our strategic plan, goals and objectives in the regards of a well-run city organization, an enhanced network of infrastructure, the strong sense of place, and a strong and diverse local economy. Each department that submitted a project request had to score those projects in regards to how closely they related to each of those goals and objectives within that strategic plan. The committee then collectively looked at all of those that were submitted and made sure consistently across the board that the scoring criteria was applied applicably. Depending upon how you interpreted some of the scoring criteria, we made sure that that was consistent for each of those projects. After that, some of the other considerations that were for the projects were going to be long-term planning objectives and initiatives. Those focused on if there were relation to other CIP projects. So cross-departmental-wise, if you had, you know, somebody in the street that was needing to do a project, and somebody over in parks could utilize potentially those same services and achieve some sort of cost savings, there were additional considerations that were made for if that could happen, as well as if the project was addressed in a master plan somewhere that had come before commission or any other sort of committee prior to that. So if there was any sort of long-term planning associated with those projects, those were addressed in there as well. The last component of the strategic plan process was the financial considerations, which comprised of our two ways in which we fund projects is through cash or debt. We'll talk a little bit more later on in the presentation about debt capacity and where we are as an organization with that. Cash, the committee went through a prioritization. Because there's only so much money to go around, they went through a prioritization in terms of determining which projects are considered mission critical, which ones are considered service critical, and which ones are considered program critical. Definitions for each of those would be mission critical had to deal with any sort of compliance or regulatory required projects. Those ones, if you have to do those, those ones scored or got more points because they had to be done. Service critical ones, we no longer would provide those services as they currently exist. And then the program critical would be the service offering may be eliminated, but the actual service in general may still be offered, just in a different sort of capacity. As Rena had mentioned, the cash balance in the general fund is targeted at $9.5 million. So the number of projects within the cash portion is going to be dependent upon where we fall within that target range for the general fund. Yes.
As of what date?
So we're kind of still working in regards to what date we want to use, if we want to use year-end, if we want to use final close, because that could potentially change from the very year-end to when we actually close. So we're still working through those details to determine at what point we want to cap that off and be able to let individuals know if they can move forward with their cash-minded projects.
Okay.
Okay, previously I mentioned before that both vehicles and equipment were removed from being included in the capital improvement program, as well as any IT hardware costs associated. What we've decided to do and what happens across a lot of cities is the establishment of internal service funds for these services. Internal service funds are used to track goods or services shifted between departments on a cost reimbursement basis. IT provides services to all departments here within the organization, anywhere from, you know, updates to IT help desks, any of those. And so that is kind of how you're able to track those on a cost basis is through the internal service funds. Very similar is with fleet. Fleet provides services to a good majority of departments here within the organization in terms of maintenance on vehicles. And so that's how we'll want to track those moving forward is going to be through that internal service fund. That internal service fund for fleet is also going to strategically plan for the replacement of vehicles. As we have on here, there's in equipment. There's 175 vehicles currently within the city's fleet and 50 pieces of heavy equipment. Heavy equipment we capped off as being greater than 50,000. So those, you know, hammers, those sort of things that are less than 50 are not included in this sort of internal service fund. Those are allocated out throughout the operating departments.
Sorry to stop you. One of the things I'd like to know, just for future references, we had increased the spending authority to $50,000 for our city manager. And I think that's probably why you're saying over $50,000. I would like to know how many were $50,000 or below? Because if it's two that are $50,000, that's already $100,000. So I just want to have an idea how many were between the $45,000, $50,000 range, at least to see how much, as we go into more budget sessions, I'd like that information.
Yep, absolutely. We can provide that. So with that, I mean, that 175 vehicles is a lot to be replaced in terms of over the useful life of those vehicles. So this fund will allow for that strategic replacement of those vehicles on a schedule based upon how frequently they get used, their actual useful life, all factors into, as well as their condition, all factors into that replacement schedule. Okay, so as Rena mentioned, the capital improvement program for the five years 2023 through 2027, as well as a vast amount of detail was provided in regards to what we're looking at for this next five-year cycle. This here kind of just gives a general synopsis in terms of the general fund, utilities, other sources. Other sources are going to include your special revenue, any sort of grants, potentially as well as any other outside sources are configured into that number. These numbers include both cash as well as debt projects, so they combine both of those together. And they only include the total cost of the project, not necessarily the budget impact for the project. That's really only a consideration when you're looking at your debt projects, because if you've got a project that you've authorized in '23, having, you know, $10 million, you're not going to see that budget impact potentially for another three years down the road when you actually do turn around and issue debt for it. So this just includes project costs, not necessarily when you're actually going to see that come on from an impact perspective. Are there any other questions in regards to the capital improvement program or any changes that were made for that for this year?
I wanted to ask about the fund that you're going to be maintaining. You plan to keep that fund fairly constant over the years and replenish it, right?
In terms of the IT or the fleet?
Both.
Yeah, so those will maintain a healthy balance on both of those. We're not going to allow it grow substantially, but it is going to have enough in there to make sure that we're able to purchase what we need to for the next year, as well as have a little bit of cushion in regards to that. Those funds will also include the operating budgets for those departments. So there will be some costs allocated to that fund for like IT, if they need to purchase additional cables, any sort of things like that. There'll be money allocated in that budget in order for them to be able to do that, as well as with fleet, you know, bulk purchases of oil or any of that sort of stuff.
You're just not going to be spending the seed corn.
Yes, yep. We'll make sure they maintain a healthy balance in order to replenish what's needed for the fleet, as well as IT.
Go ahead.
So you're going to, the first year's funded with ARPA money, I thought I saw there. And what is sort of the plan after that year? Is there just the usual throw grab some money from here, there, and everywhere? Some cash balance and sales tax extra, a little bit of, Jason?
Yeah, I think we should differentiate between subject matter because vehicles, equipment, IT are all going to be part of the budgeting process, the operation budgets within each department. So we're already seeing those things. We acknowledge the ARPA funds going into those to provide some cushion for our operation, but eventually they will be part of the operation budget. The CIP, and some of you have asked questions about this, as far as it's intended to show you what is needed, what we have as far as inventory, what we see on the immediate horizon, what we're willing to rank and put a priority to. Those projects don't just happen. If there's a willingness and a desire from the commission to move forward with those, then we'll need to identify and generate revenue. If that revenue isn't identified or generated, those things just move back. You know, there is that eight and a half million we're trying to balance on an annual basis. We end the year at nine and a half. Your question to Rebecca, or, you know, when? When will we make that determination? To me, it's the last three to six months of sales tax. When we're 88% dependent on a source other than property tax in the general fund, it's not a guarantee. It's not reliable. So eight and a half, $9 million, we need to make sure we have that for a variety of other reasons. It's not there to fund a CIP. It's when you go beyond that, nine and a half, 10, 10 and a half. Now you peel off a couple million dollars and apply it towards the priority list of capital improvement projects. There's no guarantee. It's more of a reflection, really, for our community, for you as elected officials, to get a snapshot into this organization of the 50-plus million in CIP that we have on the horizon. If revenues are materialized, we'll do those things. If they don't, they stay on the list.
Next.
All right. We'll move on next to our revenue neutral rate. Last year was the first year where we had to factor in a revenue neutral rate calculation. The rate is calculated compared to your prior year adverb tax to your current year estimates. That formula that they use to compute that is up here on the screen. We did, as Rena mentioned, receive our information from the county in regards to what our revenue neutral rate will be for the 2023 budget year. And you can see that that is at the 50.548. Current mil for the 2022 budget was 52.143. Our revenue neutral rate that was provided to us for the '22 budget was 49.562. Any questions on the revenue neutral rate? As Rena mentioned, we will have additional work sessions that go further in-depth in regards to that number, as well as the city's projected 2023 budget for numbers.
And the publication date for the revenue neutral?
That you have to provide to the county by, where did I have that? I think it's July 19th, I believe, is when we have to provide that.
June 19th?
July.
July, okay.
July 19th.
Thank you.
How much is a mil worth this year?
I believe it's about $633 million. There's a couple extra numbers attached to it, but that's generically where it's sitting in regards to the current information provided by each of the two counties.
So the slide you showed us previously to this slide, the number has changed from our PowerPoint where it's 45 to 50 then, right?
Correct. That number was calced based upon estimates from prior. The counties both sent in their information in terms of their estimates, and so that number was updated with their estimates. So that there's going to be the estimated valuation provided by the county. So that's $633,977,249.
Will that change at all considering any of the damage that took place because of last weekend?
The only time I envision that that would be changing is if you've got any sort of adjustments. Those usually happen at the end, September, October timeframe, when we get our final adjustments. And that just comes from, I think, when all of the individuals who contend their appraisals and those sort of things, that's when that final comes in. I, that I'd have to see if they actually, if somebody calls on the appraiser, if they go out, if it'll have the adjustment.
January 1, January 1, then value was established.
Right.
There's like an eight-month process for them to go through all the challenges, and eventually you get a value that's solid by the end of our budgeting process. This is where they're at right now. When we get that certified, I think it's more September.
I think it's September timeframe.
And then you finally get your tax bill in October, and it's due, half due, in December, half due, in April, May timeframe. But January 1, that valuation will then be considered again. They won't do a mid-year adjustment.
So even though there may have been changes in assessment due to the impact or the damages that took place, we won't see it till next year?
Correct, and it goes both ways. You could have a house under construction January 1, it's done in June. It will not find its way to a valuation until the next January.
So when we do our discussion, we're going to base it on the 50.548?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions before we move into debt on our neutral rate? As notated here, the bond and the interest fund is the, is the fund that we is the fund that we use in order to pay for the city's obligations in terms of general obligation. There are a variety of sources that come into that fund listed here on the screen in terms of property taxes, special assessments, motor vehicle taxes, investment income, transfers all come into that in order to be able to pay for the city's current debt obligations. Up here on the slide, you can see where we've been in terms of a history from 2018 through 2021. Those numbers will be as of the end of the year for those. So 2021 would be as of the end of the year for December. The column on the far right for 2022 would be as of April 30th, where we're currently sitting from a debt standpoint in terms of bonds, temporary notes, lease purchases, as well as any state of Kansas obligation that we have out there. In June, we did issue roughly around $11 million in temporary notes. That's not factored into these numbers, but we did have some coming off at that point as well. It turned out to be, I believe, a net of possibly $2 million in regards to being on the positive side of that. Currently, we do not intend to issue any temporary notes for September, but are likely going to issue in December for some of the projects that are currently under construction in terms of those sort of things. I think other than that, that's all I needed on that. Are there any questions?
Yeah, yeah. So what was the, so next, for so far to this year compared to 2020, the temp notes are $87,000 more than they used to be. What are those top three or four projects?
Those are going to be your big five. A lot of the, a lot of the increase in those temporary notes have to do with a lot of those big five coming on. North Campus Corridor came on. Aggieville was a lot of those that we've issued temporary notes for. That will be coming over into that, into that bond side within the next three, four.
Aggieville Infrastructure, Aggieville Streets and stuff.
Yep.
And we've already, have we paid out quite a bit of front money on the levy and airport or anything yet or not? Not yet? And that's still part of this year?
Yeah, and joint maintenance facilities, significant. Aggieville Parking Garage, significant. Those are the temp note, I mean, yeah, there's a difference between 66 million and 136 million just between '20 and '21. We've issued an additional 20 million in temp notes this year. So, yeah, it it's going to peak and then it'll start coming back down. Or in, I don't know if you, are you sharing the internal look at debt?
Yes, and the next one breaks it down based upon our city at large share, those that are factored out for utilities, special assessments, as then will as our special obligations, which are going to be your TIF, any of those attached to that, your TDDs as well.
So as we look into the the future, other than the five projects that we've been discussing for the past few years, currently we're looking at Fuse, Art and Light, and Scorpion. Would any of those have a debt service? I know they're private, but I don't know what it means to the city as far as debt.
Art and Light and Fuse are private developments that we've helped facilitate. Obviously, Art and Light leverage star bonds, and we took action last Tuesday. Second reading of that ordinance, that bond closing will happen in late June, I think the 29th, but has no financial responsibility to the city. The Fuse is in the similar spot, so that's a private development. Nagyville is going to generate a lot of tax increment for the district for us to use on public projects in the future. Scorpion, we've really yet to discuss just exactly how that eight million in EcoDevo incentives would come from the city. One option is to bond it. That is an option. One to consider, there's a variety of ways we can structure that approach and that debt. But as far as those three projects go, it's really Scorpion that's going to present you an opportunity or a challenge to look at how you're going to fund that incentive package.
What about the discussion on the indoor aquatic center?
Yeah, I think you've got some options there. You know, one of them is 2027 sales tax. But we're a long ways away from talking about that project from a debt perspective, in my opinion. Probably got to go to a vote and see if there's support. And then once that's realized, then you've got another revenue stream to consider, you know, to help with that finance. And that's that's something with the big five that, you know, when we, 2023 sales tax coming online here in January, it was a big part of that. And even the point three that failed identified really those big five plus one in terms of, we knew these projects were on the horizon. We knew these initiatives were out there. Weren't interested in really raising property taxes, so we went with the sales tax. And fortunately, we got it through. But that is a tremendous revenue stream for the big five over the next 10, 15 years.
Right. I'm just trying to see what else out there.
Yeah, Jason, on the step service, you know, the current economic development tax, part of that goes into this every year, right?
Yeah, as far as debt service, we peel a million of the three million off, and it goes towards the bond and interest. So then we have 2 million that goes towards the total EcoDevo package and fund.
And then when the new one goes to effect in January, it'll be a higher amount, right? Because we dedicated 70%, I think?
Yeah, and I think Rena and I have talked about a scenario and Rebecca where, yeah, more more will go into debt service, bond and interest. Now, we've identified the big five, which are all going to land in the debt service. So even more than what traditionally has gone to bond and interest will go into bond and interest. There's also the strategy to talk with you all about, about the existing roughly 6 million that's sitting in 2012 to 22 EcoDevo, rolling into bond and interest to help that cash balance. That money's already pledged towards future projects as well, but it'll help us in the interim get that balance to where we need it.
I like that idea.
Why wouldn't we spend the economic development money for the Scorpion 8 million dollars?
The old money?
Well, we have
Is that the question, though? The 12 to 22?
The collective economic development money rather than bonding and paying on the interest on the debt and
I think there are options there, Commissioner and Mayor, that that we could absolutely do. I think the combination that we liked was a combo of debt and cash. And it could be even a combo of the 12 to 22 money plus the new money.
So the other impediment we have is that most of that money is to be spent in Riley County. And in order to spend it in Potawatomi County on Scorpion, we'd have to get the permission of Riley County to do that. That's the the bulk of the, we have a little bit of money in the old
One of the accounts.
City sales tax, but I think it's a million, maybe?
Eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand?
That's a major reason.
Yep.
That's the big reason.
That's the big reason. Okay, thank you. That's all I need to hear. Even if we annex it, that would be the problem?
Yeah.
Yes.
The cash option is really taking into account, you could bond that today and not have to make a bond payment for three and a half, four years. So you could accumulate some cash in the 23 sales tax and not have to bond at all if you didn't want to.
One trap after another, huh? Pothole, maybe?
Most of that, though, as Jason has said, has been, if you recall, most of the North Manhattan project phases were tied to economic, using those economic development funds for those projects. And, you know, that's, you could pay down some of those instead of bonding them, but that was really the intent of those. And the the strategy to move some of that money into the bond and interest fund will help us from a rating standpoint and other aspects if ultimately we decide that it's best to continue with our plans to bond them.
I just want to mention, since we're talking Scorpion, I'm not interested in bonding any debt to support that program. If we don't have the cash, I'm going to have an issue with that because we got enough city debt.
So the, and we can talk about it later, but the the issue would be is we don't have, we won't have collected the funds.
I understand that, but that, when we start negotiating with them, I'm just going to say right now, off the table for me is bonding anything to support that project. We, you know, that's just off the table.
Some of that's going to be real dependent on the structure in which we negotiate. Where we're starting, I don't think we would necessarily have to bond any. We'll see where the company ends up and the document ends up, Commissioner, but we, I hear you and we hear you. We're trying to start there.
So the other question I have is, we know that Kansas State University has a massive master plan for some of their development as well, for the foundation and such. For the North Campus Corridor, we allotted a ton of money from a lot of sources. So I don't know what that looks like if there is an ask from the city for all of that development that they're thinking for the next few years.
I'm not aware of any ask on the EcoDevo side for any private development at this point. We've committed a lot to that public infrastructure, and every chance I get, I remind them of how much we've committed there. We did get their support in the sales tax, and I think the chamber would acknowledge the foundation was a supporter of the 2023 sales tax and helped them in marketing that. But at the same time, I don't think we're in a position to really get into that private development incentive packages, given everything we've put into that corridor.
It was about 50,000. It started with like 22,000, I'm sorry, a million.
Yeah.
It started with like 20 million and we're up to 50 million, City University Funds, everything we can think of. And also just staff time for going after all those grants that didn't come to fruition. So I just, I'm trying to think of everything possible that might come in the next four to five years.
And Rena and Rebecca have done an excellent job. When we look at all the debt, when you look at that 337 million and you roll it out over the next 10, 15 years, obviously, there's a number, I mean, over half, almost half of that is temp notes. So that's really what we're going to be dedicated to over the next 10 years. We've looked at all revenue streams. We've looked at the way the bond and interest is set up. And that's why I was mentioning earlier, I don't know if you have that slide, we look at it all the time, but we we peak out in 2025, and then we start to come down. But we've got all that involved in that portfolio and that analysis. And our debt will come down, and it is manageable to the point where we've we've stressed it and made sure that the sales tax, the state grants, the benefit districts, all those different revenue streams that come in to help assist with our debt, we can manage it. It's not a situation today where we are like, yeah, we got to get ready for a five or six mil increase. That's not the circumstance. But we do have a lot of revenue on the horizon that I've bellyached in here many a times. It's not altogether guaranteed. You know, the community needs to continue to grow, and it needs to continue to prosper, and people need to continue to have opportunities to buy things in our community because we're so reliant and dependent on sales tax. And that really is where the majority of your revenue is forecasted to come from. So those are the efforts and the energies that, I've talked to you before at your retreat about getting a retail sale, a retail strategy put together to try to provide our shoppers and our, become that regional shopping center. We did one in '02, and we were able to, you know, identify over 200,000 square feet that we were deficient in terms of commercial space. It's probably time to do one again, just to recognize what it is we're providing that traditionally you would find in Manhattan, and what are people leaving Manhattan to go purchase? And drop those sales tax somewhere else. And just acknowledging it and understanding what it is, but also identifying redevelopment opportunities or new growth opportunities where this retail could possibly come into our community.
When we, when are we scheduled to complete the North Campus Corridor? Is that 2025?
I think Rob has the design contract in July or August for Phase 13, and that, I'm sorry, Phase, yeah, it is Phase 11, and that'll be, that'll be our final phase.
Which is what year?
That's the Denison and Kimball intersection.
2023?
We'll start construction maybe towards the end of '23, beginning of '24.
Because in my mind, I'm interested in shifting emphasis away from the North Campus Corridor, feeling that we have lived up to our commitment, but we have some real needs that aren't at the North Campus Corridor also, and that has, that have suffered. And so it really is a balancing act, and I know you juggle things, but I'd like to be able to pay down some of the debt. And I really am interested in an industrial park. And I know there are other needs that we have in the community that we have to pursue. And you know that more than I do, probably, so, okay. Rebecca? Hello?
All right. Any other questions before we continue on? So still talking about debt, every city is allowed to to issue a certain amount of debt. There are projects that factor into that capacity, and there are those that get excluded from that capacity. Those listed up here on the screen are those that can be excluded from that capacity, being any sort of water, wastewater, or stormwater-related projects, as well as any general obligation bond refunding or certain street intersection and streets in front of schools or city property can also be excluded from that capacity calculation, which I'll show on the next slide in regards to how that all factors in. In regards to that school district, that does not include anything associated with K-State. That's just going to be the actual 383 school districts and those around it. So it does not include any K-State property.
Tell me what refunding general obligation bonds means?
So refunding of general obligations is basically a refinance in regards to that debt. So you can issue and then come back and refinance that debt if you want to refinance. There are certain parameters around which you can, the timeframe with which you can turn around and actually refinance those. But that's, that's kind of what you can associate it with as a refinance.
This certain street improvements, it's just around schools, but it also says, or city property. That's pretty, you could drive a truck through that, probably.
So it, like I said, it kind of depends on that. You want to be consistent in regards to that calculation as to what you consider to be that city property in terms of the bounds of that city property. Very similar to what you would do for intersections. You want to make sure when you're providing that that calculation, those calculations are consistent from intersection to intersection. You don't want to say this intersection gets 20 feet, the next intersection gets 15 feet, those sort of things. Those calculations need to be consistent across the board in regards to how you calculate those.
So on the page before that gives the breakdown of total city debt, when you say these items are all exempt, they're exempt from the general obligation bonds. Are they also exempt from the temp notes?
Yes. So anything associated with that water, wastewater, or storm are excluded from our capacity that we can issue as a city.
Where would I find the total for these items that are separate from the?
So our geo temporary note debt that's subject to capacity is going to be that 166 million dollars right there. That 166,592, 116 are those projects that are subject to debt capacity. So they're not any of those items listed before.
Subject to the debt limit. This is within the debt limit, but what is it that's outside of the debt limit?
So that'll be all of those other projects that are before, any wastewater, any storm water.
Do you have a number for that?
I'm looking for the, what that is.
I believe it's at 337 minus the 166.
So it's another 167?
170 million, yeah. The debt limit is, honestly, I don't know why it's there. I assume it's the state's attempt to keep cities from just issuing debt to a point where they run themselves into a negative situation and the state has to step in. One thing I wanted to mention tonight, and this is, we can talk about this later, we can give you a broader overview, but there's a weird little nuance in the law that allows you all to establish a public building commission. As a public building commission, you can issue debt that is not subject to the state's limit. It's an opportunity for you as a governing body to look, and I'm going to use Rob's project because it is the, really, it's a really good example. The joint maintenance facility is something a community does once every 50 years. The Public Building Commission could issue the debt for that project roughly 25, 26 million dollars and keep it away from your debt capacity. It recognizes it, and the community would recognize it, as a debt that isn't normal. It's not usual. Therefore, through the Public Building Commission, which literally can be you, the city commission, could issue that debt and keep it from infringing upon your debt capacity. Bond Council has pointed it out to us a number of times. In 1987 or 1988, the city actually passed an order In 1987 or 1988, the city actually passed an ordinance, create a charter ordinance to create the public building commission. So it exists. Now, that ordinance and that charter don't give us the flexibility that we could have through a new charter and that's where bond council is like, you might want to reconsider a new charter to identify what it is you can do within the public building commission. Probably 20 years ago, Ron, we talked about it for downtown redevelopment and TIFs and just, public building commissions can be involved in that too. And it can, it can function in a way that just allows you to keep certain debts away from that capacity. It's something to consider. I do think we have a plan moving forward if you're not interested in doing that. We can manage this and keep the debt capacity within, within range and not exceed it. But the public building commission does, does offer the alternative. There are a number of projects that are eligible under that public building commission. All the rec centers would have been eligible, even though that debt's really not out there that long. We, we didn't issue any permanent debt, we issued temp notes, but even that would come off. Anything that we're doing vertically that is unusual or a community-led initiative would be eligible. Parking garage in Aggieville, again, once in 40 years, you're going to do something like that. You could pull that debt out. Just between the parking garage and the joint maintenance facility is 40 million dollars. You could peel right away and have debt capacity for 66 instead of, I think, 63 instead of the 23 showed up there. But that's what's counting against you right now, some of those projects that are once in multiple decade type of approaches. Something to think about moving forward.
I think, I don't know if we, that's the direction we would want to go, but does Junction City have that? Is that what they used for their land bank?
I don't think so. They went to the legislature and got their debt limit increased.
But they also change hats sometimes and go in as a different type of border commission when they discuss their land bank items out there. I wasn't sure if that's what it is. But I think with the current process we have in place for, for us, I think it keeps us a little bit more disciplined in our choices and how we do it. I'm glad to know that it's there, if we should need it in the future, but I think it's, at least it keeps me more disciplined within our budget and staying within our limits. And also making sure the community is not coming to us with every single idea and why don't you just do this kind of thought process.
Going to the next one where it talks about the debt, there you go. So before it starts coming back down, how much more of that 26,524 available debt authority? How close are we thinking we're going to get before it starts coming back down? Within 10 million, 5 million?
Well, let me first talk about how the debt limit is actually increased or decreased. So we can increase our debt limit by our valuation. So Rebecca just went over, our valuation is estimated about 633 million dollars for 2023. So that number would be that first line up there. And I just did a brief calculation, our quick calculation. That would increase our actual debt capacity by another 11 million dollars just from that valuation increase. And then paying off the debt would increase it as well. So Rebecca mentioned earlier that in June, we issued 11 million dollars in temporary notes. We're going to pay off 13 million and then that was a net 2 million dollars. So that's another 2 million that we would add to that. So coming in the fall, we'll add on some more projects related to North Campus Corridor as well as the airport. And so that will decrease that amount. And then when we're talking about our CIP program, and if you look at that packet that was put together by Rebecca and her team, we would need to factor that in and we do have that information part of our strategy as well. So we're constantly reviewing our debt limit each month. We're working with Public Works to make sure that, as Rebecca mentioned, those projects that are street-related, if there are intersections, we're calculating those to exclude those amounts. Previous slides, the TIF is excluded, star bonds are excluded. If we do issue any TIF debt that is related to GO bonds, then that would be included in our debt limit. So those are things we need to factor in as well. So we're constantly reviewing all of the various criteria related to the calculation of the debt limit.
Okay, I had another question, but I forgot it and I remember it now.
Circle back around.
Yeah, I just want to comment on the public building.
Come in with a question while you're thinking. That assessed valuation of tangible property, does that include property that isn't subject to property tax? Because it's nonprofit government or there's a tax abatement?
Correct. So it's the valuation that was previously approved in 2022, like in October timeframe? And then for 2023, once we have that budget approved at the end of this year, that would be the, around that 633 million that came from the county.
Rena, I think he's asking, is K-State's value in that number?
No.
And it's not?
No.
Right, or the Light Museum wouldn't go in that number?
Correct.
Right. Now, someone has a tax abatement, like, like when Scorpion comes online, there'll be a big property valuation, but there'll be a tax abatement. Does that go in that number?
No, that tangible, that assessed valuation is a reflection of property taxpaying properties.
Okay, so, so Scorpion wouldn't until after that abatement is?
Correct.
Okay, great, that's what I wanted to know.
I was just going to comment, I'm not interested in a public building commission, just so everybody knows, not interested at all.
One other thing that I don't think we mentioned was that, one of the things we've done, especially in this decade and a half of fairly low interest rates, record low interest rates is we typically have issued GO debt for utility projects. A lot of cities issue revenue bonds because that's the revenue, and we're using revenue from those utilities to pay off those bonds. But we're enjoining a lower interest rate because we're issuing them as GO bonds because we've pledged our full faith and credit behind them. We'd be paying a much higher interest rate if we were issuing revenue bonds for them. But if we issued it in revenue bonds, they wouldn't be subject to the debt limit. Am I accurate in that?
Yeah, the best example is the North TIF bonds. Those are special revenue bonds. We issued that bond at about 21 million dollars. If you recall, in order to issue that bond, we had to have a 1.3 or a 130% debt coverage ratio. We don't have to have that debt coverage ratio when we issue debt. And that debt was also issued for about 5.5% versus our, you know, roughly 2, 2.5% we're issuing. So you pay an inordinate amount of interest when you structure those special revenue bonds.
Okay, I remembered my question. So our financial advisors, when they start grading us about stuff, how big of a deal is it? I know my FICO score, if I'm using a high percentage of my available credit, that they ding the crap out of you on your FICO score. Is that being within 26 million of our state imposed debt limit? Is that much of a, is that a 5% weighting of our credit worthiness or 50%? Just approximate, is it a big deal or not a big deal?
I wouldn't say it's not a big deal. They do review our debt limit as well as our bond counsel. And that's our attorneys down in Wichita, Gimler and Bell. There are other criteria that they look at and mainly, and we've mentioned this a couple of times tonight, is our balances and our bond and interest fund and our general fund. And the, any other funds that we have that are available to help pay debt or pay operating costs. And so within the general fund, it's that three-month rate of our operating expenses. Our bond and interest fund, we need to make sure that our revenue's coming in. So Jason talked a lot about the various sources of revenues to help pay for our debt and including the big five. But that revenue needs to be greater than the expenses. So we have dwindled down our bond and interest fund cash balance to a point where now we have to boost it back up. And that's why we're working on a strategy to do that. So when we do have to start paying for this debt, well, it won't be expense greater than revenue. And so those are the major things that they're looking at, as well as they're comparing us to like municipalities and how much debt that they're issuing. So right now, we're just highly debt impacted because of those major growth projects. And as our financial advisor mentioned, back when he came in February or before, it's a good position that the city is in to be able to have all this progress in the development. And we just need to continue to work towards those strategies and working with y'all to create those and making sure that the sustainable revenue sources are there.
So it's more cash on hand and available cash versus what the actual total?
And I think they also look as well as, you know, do you have a plan for how you're going to pay that debt off? Not just you're issuing, you're issuing and you have no idea how you're going to repay that back. But as long as you've kind of got a plan for how you anticipate that you're going to repay those, that goes as well as, I think, into that consideration is what they've also indicated is you've got some sort of strategy into regards to how you're going to pay it off and then turn around and if you did dip into those cash reserves, turn around and replenish those to, to continue moving forward.
The only additional item I would add, Mark, is the utility reserves. It is an area they look at as well. And when you look at our water and wastewater over the last five years, they're not heading in the direction they're comfortable with. We have had rate increases, but when you look at the rate increases versus the cash available in those reserves, they, we've come down quite a bit. And we've relied on those cash balances, not only in debt, not only in general fund, but we've done it in utilities too. And that, they really notice that. It's like watching your savings dwindle and, and you're, yeah, and just your own internal finances. Knowing you're going against that. You're not building it, it's actually coming down, which means you're, you're spending more than you're taking in.
The other aspect I would point out is that, that isn't typical of your typical city is that most cities put a lot of their most reliable funding source of property tax in their debt service funds. We put 3 million a year in property taxes in our, one of our biggest liabilities. And that bond rating agency's not like that at all.
So Rebecca, you said earlier that one mil is 633,000. If the valuation rate is somehow, you know, 643 million, would it be 643,000? Or that's not the way this works?
Yeah, so your mil's equate over to that, to that thousand in regards to?
Just the $10,000 difference.
Yeah, it's usually how, is how that works in regards to switching them. So yes.
Thanks.
But Commissioner Ready, in terms of comparing apples to apples, that 633 is compared to that 598 million? And then that other amount is our motor vehicle. So the motor vehicle doesn't have a mil levy impact? In term, it does have a mil levy impact, but it's not to the degree of what we're talking about in terms of our revenue neutral rate.
Right. So when we do mil levy, it's primarily to land, property, as opposed to like a vehicle? Is that what you're saying? Right, that's what I'm thinking. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
So does that mean we have 45 million dollars worth of motor vehicles in our city?
Riley County.
Riley County?
But that's also including watercraft, other type of bigger trucks and things like that as well?
I'm just looking at the rate, at the price increases of cars. I mean, that number should be zooming up by at least 10 or 15%. Yeah, you can find one. There you go. Thank you, Rebecca.
Okay, so we'll quickly just cover some of the major projects. A lot of them have kind of been addressed in regards to, through the discussion throughout. As we talked about, throughout, Aggieville's been addressed as well. That continues to make progress and to, to continue to move through the, the various phases and the various pieces of that. Each of these slides, as Rena mentioned, was provided back in February in regards to funding sources when they anticipate to actually turn over into permanent debt and the term with which we're anticipating that that debt will be financed over. The next one's going to be Airport Runway. That total amount of that 59 million does include the runway, but also does include taxiway construction associated with that. Here within the next week, on the 21st of June, we'll have the bid opening for that runway reconstruction to kind of hopefully fine tune that number a little bit more in terms of where we'll be at for that.
But that's, we're on the hook for 50, 5.4 million?
That's estimated currently.
Okay.
But depending upon how that bid comes in, we'll also adjust that number.
Everything's higher, right?
Let's hope not cross our fingers. Joint maintenance facility, very similar to Aggieville, is currently under construction. You can go out there and see, see it coming up out of the ground. Has various funding sources associated with it. And then in terms of the term with which we finance it, still looking in regards to how long we want to issue that debt for.
Now, the sale of the old property is going against this, I take it? That was a little over a million, million three or something?
Five, million five.
Okay, so that'll, that'll help to some extent.
That was a real win, win.
Levy improvements, as with the other projects, are continuing to move on and continuing to grow. When I spoke with the city engineer today, he said they're roughly around 35% completed and then anticipates roughly being completed within that, that 24 timeframe as well currently.
That it's at 23 million for city at large. Somehow I thought it was 10 million.
That was at the beginning.
So this, this includes all the betterments? Remember? So if we're just talking about the original levy project, it was at a lower number. But we added about 14 million in betterments that we're 100% responsible for. So it probably should say levy improvements and betterments.
And betterments.
It should say that.
We also, we also have a piece of that project that's not been bid yet, which is the railroad. And, you know, I think we told you that that was, is being handled separately. Still negotiating, the corps is still negotiating with the railroad on the type of improvement that ultimately will end up there with. And there's been some funds set aside for that. We hope that'll be enough, but it may not be. So we'll, we'll have match for that as well. I mean, it's the typical match process. Ultimately, that would come later.
Moving on to North Campus Corridor, currently Phases 8, 9 and 10 are, have been awarded and are under construction. Phase 11, which is the Kimball-Dennison intersection, the scope and fee for final design will possibly be coming to you here hopefully by summer. And then construction following that as well in that timeframe as well.
I just want to point out that I appreciate the commission's support for putting all the power lines underground. Had we had all the power poles on North Manhattan, I think we'd have lost most of them from this last storm. So when I talked to K-State, they didn't lose any of their power. So, I mean, we did three sides. They're still a little bit above ground there by, in front of MBAF. That will, that has where their substation is that comes in. But that's been a big improvement where we've put that power underground.
Just a question on the City University Fund. I think, you know, that was half a million a year. And how long is that going to continue?
20 years.
20 years, at least.
Total of 10 million dollars, yeah. 500K for 20, 10 million dollar total.
Okay, yeah, because that's a big number. I think people need to be aware of that.
Yeah, and we got 3 million.
That limits really what you can do with the City University Fund. That takes a lion's share out of there. But that, you know, 10 million dollars out of the 43, you know, when, I've, a lot of people have said, why are we, you know, spending all of our tax money on that? And it's important to highlight that 10 million of that is coming right from sales on campus.
Even further with that, 7 million from the state in grants and another 3 million from athletics. So 20 million is, and I describe it a lot as the back of curb improvements. All the things that really beautify that area, that 20 million dollars is going a long way towards accomplishing that. And I've had a lot of conversations with people about that. Citizens calling in concerned about how much money the city's putting in North Campus. And I make that point to them, recognizing the curb-to-curb improvements are really what the city is funding. The behind the curb is really where the university's participation. And most seem to be more receptive to the project after we explain it that way.
Is this 43, this is total, so this isn't 43 more, this is 43 total? Is this forty-three, this is total, so this isn't forty-three more, this is forty-three total from the beginning, okay.
I appreciate hearing about the underground power lines, because I have voted no. And every time I try to say no, I end up eating those words, that word.
All right, any other questions in regards to those big five, we're going to kind of switch gears a little bit and kind of talk a little bit about, about ARPA here in regards to, into that and the budget? Yep. This way, okay, sorry. This slide has been presented in the past as well. It allocates out or kind of shows how we anticipate spending our ten million dollars that we elected to take in terms of that revenue loss strategy as well as at the bottom, that two point six to two point seven million dollars that you'll be able to spend on those community needs. We did receive our second allotment of those, of that ARPA tranche as well this month, so we do have our full, full allotment in regards to the total amount there. But this kind of, kind of lays out how we, how we anticipate, like I said, spending our, our revenue loss and then envision coming back for that two point six to two point seven. Some feedback from you all in terms of how you want to spend that for those community needs that need to be addressed.
What's the deadline to have that committed?
Currently, it is twenty twenty-five?
I think it's six.
Twenty twenty-four for the commitment.
Yeah, for the commitment, if it's spent is twenty twenty-six. So you have to say how you're going to do it by twenty-four with actual expenditures happening within that twenty twenty-six timeframe.
There is a law or a proposed law still in Congress that's passed the House, I don't think it's passed the Senate, or maybe it's vice versa. I think it's passed the Senate and hasn't passed the House, actually, that provides additional flexibility and more time. Don't know whether they'll get any more action on it, but that's kind of where we're at today. And as we've go through this budget process, we've heard a little bit of deliberation from additional need, but we haven't, you know, specifically gone out to advertise that here's the funds we've identified as flexible and potentially there for community use if folks have an interest, which we anticipate doing.
So is it correct to interpret this to say that, you know, on the chart there that's outlined in blue, those funds are committed as part of the budget process? But you've got two point six million that is just sitting there that we can use?
Yes.
Yes.
Within the confines of the small print there.
Right.
Yeah, they have to, those have to be conform with the provisions as mandated in the law.
Okay.
But we'll be seeing more detail about the, how you plan to spend this, okay?
Yeah.
And we'll be talking more about the community part.
Process.
Process, yeah.
And Mayor, I can envision that we would probably talk a lot about that during the outside agency presentation. We'll have SSAB presentation during that time as well as special alcohol fund. And so the requests historically have been more than what has been approved. And so we envision that additional two point seven million dollars can be allocated towards making up that difference if you also choose. And we would need to go through an application process to do that.
Yes, good. But I'm interested in having the part where the community discusses their needs. So we can, because that's one of the requirements of ARPA also, and we haven't had that discussion in my mind.
Yeah, I can see the agencies coming to that meeting on June twenty-eighth and the future budget work sessions and bringing up that as well.
That implies limiting it to the, the agencies that we typically have?
No, there, there could be other public comment during that time from other agencies. I do know that there are other agencies that did not submit requests.
Okay.
Through SSAB and special alcohol that are on the horizon and are making gains and headway in the community that SSAB and special alcohol are aware of. And so they may have requested needs as well.
According to the fine print there, you know, we get all this litany of emails about roads, it could all be put in road maintenance, right? That's what it says.
There's certain restrictions on it, but, excuse me, there are certain restrictions on where those are, but there are categories where some of that could be used, yes.
Just say also that our taxpayers have some community needs and we can manage to use it to offset some things so we can give them a little relief. That would be very nice.
I think it, it's also important that the legislature passed a certain number of millions of dollars to go to businesses or to allocate a certain, some, I don't know what their process is for businesses to take advantage of that. But I don't know if it's just to businesses or also nonprofits or to municipalities, but it was quite a large chunk, like forty million dollars or something, I don't.
Is that outside the scope of this ARPA money in a separate process? Or are the business, is the business community going to step up for this two point six million?
They could, both the federal agencies and then the state of Kansas have, just about every federal agencies have ARPA-type funds that are, you have to apply directly to that agency. Those, a lot of those grants are continuing to roll out over time. The state of Kansas still is holding a lot of their funds that they had identified earlier. So there's, and then they're rolling out others, so a lot of those are, have been targeted to, and that's where the, the bulk of those, most of those, I would say, are going to non-public entities. But there are some that the public entities are eligible for. We applied for funds for the entrepreneurship center, as you might recall, and weren't successful in that. They had about ten times the applicants that they had money for, so, but we, we're, something we're constantly keeping our eye out as to what we might be eligible for.
I just think since there, until two thousand twenty-four, you said, if there's at least next year, if we take twenty twenty-three and see how the state is going to allocate or what kind of process they have, and then we can look at a process for people to apply even here, just like during, when we first had COVID, we had the Chamber of Commerce help us out. So I think there's some processes to be there, but I would like to see how much some of those organizations already received and give preference to ones that were not eligible for whatever reason first, and then allocate it appropriately as needed. But definitely a process needs to be in place as opposed to just those that ask and who knows who and, you know, I deserve it or whatever.
But this two point six million is close to four mils. Is there any way that can be allocated? You want to help businesses, you want to help the city as a whole to lower the property tax rate? Keep getting, keep getting letters on that, nobody's brought that forth, but I mean, that would make a four mil difference, that would help every business in this town.
Rena, it, it would, it be necessary to have that request processed every year? So we do as part of the twenty twenty-three budget, and then would we need to do it again as part of the twenty twenty-four budget for the ARPA money?
I, it would just depend on the total request that we have. So if we don't receive, you know, the two point six, two point seven, then we would need to do another application or public notice process to let the community know that these funds are available. It just depends on what your initial response is.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to offer the, the caution of using one-time money to reduce mill levies. You're very likely to come back the following year and have to increase your mill levy in order to sustain where you were. Something to think about is, I mean, using that money, I think you could benefit the taxpayer, but I think you have to look more towards one-time uses, not towards operations. So a, as you explore that option as a commission, I would just encourage you not to get into something that needs sustaining over time by way of using that money.
Yeah, that, that's a good point, but, you know, it could, it could make a big difference right now, the way everything's going, you know, economic wise.
Yeah, I understand.
Use all of it.
Yeah.
It's something to, to consider rather than, you know, the way it sounds now, it's like, oh, we got two point six million, anybody out there would like a piece of it, please come and make a proposal. And that seems like an administrative nightmare, we'll have all kinds of, you'll have all kinds of things to process. And, and I, and I think, you know, like my other suggestion on streets, well, that may be a one-time thing to say, okay, we gotta, we gotta fix this, because I, I get an email about streets every day.
Yeah.
And five million's obviously not enough, I think Rob briefed you needed eight, so here's a way to put a bigger dent in that.
And I would encourage you to look at the capital improvement program as well and, and see the projects that are listed in twenty-three and twenty-four. Some of those may jump out to you. The one-time expenditure there takes care of the project, no debt is issued, it's an improvement back to the community. I know it doesn't necessarily satisfy where you were headed on the tax relief, but it doesn't put pressure on future revenues.
Yeah, but indirectly that helps though on the mill levy too, because it's paying for, for things that, you know, the city's going to pay for anyway as opposed to giving this money to outside agencies, whi, which is not the core city function.
And one of those is, you know, again, you don't have to allocate that all at once either. If you want to segregate that over the, the years that you have to till twenty-four to, to do that, you can. You know, just the last one there where, you know, provision of police, fire, and other public safety services, including purchase of fire trucks and police vehicles. You know, if you, we, I know the police department purchases vehicles every year, you know, so that could be something, again, it gets back to, since they do purchase it every year, that if you continue to do that, you're going to, at some point, have, have a year that you're going to have to build back up, so.
So that could be allocated against our CPD?
Potentially.
And, and to me, that makes sense, because that's the other, you know, issue that was in here, that, you know, the, the mill levy being adversely affected by the law board and their insistence on raising the, the budget there every time. And then we got to eat it in the city if we want to stay flat, well, this might be a way to compensate for that.
I think we have some fire trucks.
I just want to interject too, I mean, I agree with Winn, I mean, what I hear about the most are taxes and, and streets. And I just think if we're having conversations of two point six million that we can give away here or there, why we want to increase taxes by eight percent and, you know, are behind on street maintenance, I just think your general citizen or taxpayer is saying, you know, what are you doing? You're placing my taxes, you're not getting my potholes filled, and you're giving away two point six million. I think we have a core responsibility we need to make sure we take care of.
You know, I, I do think that, at least for the two point six, we do need community input. I think we've decided on, you know, out of the twelve million or seventeen million, that we were a lot, thirteen million. We've designated most of those funds, at least for the two point six, there needs to be a, an effort where we hear from community members to see how we want. And I don't mean just outside agencies, it could be for businesses, it could be for whatever it is that is the need in our community. But we haven't had that discussion with the community, we are just making unilateral decisions. At least with the two point six, I think that is something, and if they say, yes, it should go to RCPD, or yes, it should go to Rose, or yes, it should, you know, go back to property, property owners or however, or rental properties, I don't know, whatever it might be, but I think that's at least something we haven't even surveyed the community on. We're just making assumptions on a, on a broad scale for the, for those funds and also with state funds to see how those are allocated at the same. There's some time, we don't have to make a decision tonight, there's some time to figure out how, what, what the community needs are.
What is the ARPA requirement for community input? And certain, is there a certain portion that has to be devoted to the community? I don't, I guess I don't know the rules. I see that we're putting ten million into the city infrastructure. And so what are the rules about community needs? I mean, yes, streets are a need, you know, I agree, but there are some, you know, other kinds of things to consider that were a loss during COVID also, and that's what this money is, is COVID-related losses. I mean, that's not good grammar, but that's what I mean.
From what I read, there's not a specific percentage that you need to allocate out. They do recommend and encourage you to seek that community involvement in terms of how those funds need to be spent. But from what I read in terms of legislation, there's not anything that mandates you to, to spend a certain amount based upon a community need or anything like that. They just recommend that you and encourage you to, to get that input from that community so it can best be used to serve everybody within.
So we'll be having a public hearing at some point?
Process.
Process.
I guess the, I mean, it's recommended.
Yeah.
And that's what, we're recommending that we, we do that. I mean, it's everything but your revenue loss component of ten million. And it's all, all that rest of that balance, and so in this case, the two point six is subject to all of the ARPA regulations. And whoever gets that has to do the compliance reporting for that as well. That's why we haven't had a lot of folks interested in our CDG funds, because there's a lot of monitoring and paperwork involved in, in that, so.
Okay, Rebecca, is there more from you?
Just one more.
Okay.
Up on the slide is just going to be kind of your, your milestones that you have throughout the rest of the twenty-three budget process, as has been mentioned a few times tonight. June twenty-eighth will be when we have outside agency information come before you. June fifth will be when you need to pass the resolution in establishing your revenue neutral rate, so that way we can go ahead and get that turned over to the county during that, that specified timeframe. July twelfth, the Chamber and the Conventioners Bureau will be here with their quarterly update as well as their request. August ninth will be when utilities are presented in terms of where they're looking at from revenue as well as utility rate standpoint. September sixth will be our first hearing on the budget as well as the revenue neutral rate. And then September twentieth will be that second reading on both of those two as well.
Okay.
And that's all I have, unless there are other?
Thank you, Rebecca, thank you, Rena.
You sure you have more?
I, I just have a few comments. I think as far as revenue, it seems like all our revenue sources are up, even if you look at the five-year trend line for the liquor tax as well as the transient guest tax and the sales tax and compensating sales tax and all of these things, and having the eight million at least more than we typically do. We have positives to work with, and I think that, that, that's really good. I think it's been really informative and the discussion's been really great as far as all of the information that Rena and Rebecca have given us. For RCPD and I think on the sheet you showed us for the library fund and the library benefits fund, I wasn't sure. I know RCPD only, you know, completely run on property taxes, but are there other, I wouldn't, I don't want to say revenue, but when they have, when they have, is it citations or fines? Or when they have Cs?
Seizures, she's, you know.
Because all of the fine money goes into the courts. The courts, and the Cs are funny, those funds, I don't know, do they go back somewhere? They go into a fund and they have to be reported to the state and can only be used on certain things.
On certain.
They, they determine that.
They determine that, so that's all I, I wanted to know, like, how much they have and how much is, because that's something maybe in the future to look at a little bit closer also.
We get a report, I, I think I saw it recently, so I'll let, I'll let you know.
Yeah, and I've been on it, but I've been such a long time ago.
As I recall being on the law board, any funds they get on seizure, you're not allowed to consider that as part of their budget.
No, but I want to know.
And that was, that was the problem, because, you know, at times there was things in there, but, you know, when, when they bought certain things, like I think that Bearcat vehicle, it, it came out of there, but that was never a budgeted item. It would, and, and they bought things like that, I think furniture at one point a, a few years ago. But, but you can't, you can't plan the budget based on those seizures.
You can't offset the budget.
That's illegal and that's, that's, their hands are tied.
Right.
And that's set out in the statute about seizure, what to do with seizure money, I think.
And then the other thing I guess people ask about too, you know, tickets, that doesn't go to RCPD either. You know, that's collected by the municipal court and, and ends up in the city coffers, at least a portion of it. The state seems to grab most of it, but. The state seems to grab most of it, but, but that's, that's the other source there.
Okay, are there other comments at all or, John? We're about ready to close up here. Did you have anything, anything you wanted to add? He said what?
Would it be possible to put that other slide that's separate there, which is the analysis of assessed valuation growth for 2023 property taxes up there? Because I think that's the key point. The Mercury, you know, had an article about property taxes, you know, raising. And, and I think that particular slide, you know, captures really the root of it.
And those numbers will change. Those were generated prior to receiving the final numbers from the county on Monday. So that valuation number will and has shifted since we've received that information from the county.
Okay, but my main, main question is there, I was interested in the, the mill levy staying flat. And based on this chart, it isn't. It's being increased. And, and I'm not going to support that. That's what I wanted to make clear. The, the starting point for discussion has got to be a flat mill levy.
You expect the city to absorb?
Yes, I do. And, and here's why. You're, you're ending up getting the. When RCP writes tickets, it goes into municipal court. So they're, they're providing some revenue streams and the, and the police department is, I'm sorry, it supports the city. And, you know, the law board fostered that on us. And three of the law board members were appointed by the city, and so that's our fault and you just eat it. And, and I also want to congratulate the library. I'm very impressed. Got a new library director and came in and that really helps with the RCPD budget because they actually reduced theirs and it doesn't look like we're doing that in too many other places, except for maybe general fund fire, so that's good work there too. But yeah, we need to, we need to eat that and that looks like it's going to be about $300,000. It's about half a mil that, that you've got there, I think, the point four. So based on the mill things, why ask that question? $350,000 or so needs to get chopped out of here someplace.
I agree.
I realize we can't reach the revenue neutral rate. I've had some people send me emails on that. That's a bridge too far, you know, at this point. But, and again, if, if, you know, you can't get that $330,000 anywhere else, well, we just talked about 2.6 that's sitting there to be allocated and let's give it to the police department and then we're at zero mils. Because, you know, I left the discussion when we voted yes on the city pay raises, that that was one of the reasons I expected to see the starting point of zero mill levy.
And we clarified during that presentation that we would come back at zero and we have delivered that, Lynn.
This isn't zero.
For city operations it is.
Yeah, I know, but that, that again, it's a.
It's what we control.
Yeah, I know, and that, that's not my understanding of it. I, I want to force you to do even what you don't control and you've done that in the past. I think you just sort of moved the, the shells around there and so I'm not real pleased with that.
Gotcha.
As I was saying, I agree with Lynn on that. You know, our appointees to the law board voted for this, that's, you know, I think we need to look at how we can correct that in the future. But I just can't see raising the mill levy after a new sales tax, getting all that ARPA money and doing those increases. I, I can't raise the mill levy.
I need to point out that to date, the Riley County Police Department have not been compensated at all with ARPA money because neither the city nor the county have chosen to assist them in recovering some of the losses that they had. And they have sent a letter twice saying that, that. So there's a difference of opinion and you're constantly critical of the law board. I think we have a great law enforcement program here and we have ARPA money that we can, we are making a lot of the city budget whole and it's a matter of how we choose to arrange the checkers on the board. So it, it, it is, should not be a constant criticism. There, there's nothing bad. It, it's, it is, a half a mil is not the end of the world. And, but, and it's not, it'll be interesting to see how much the city budget goes up percent-wise and some of the other governmental units that have also been affected by COVID. So we need to keep things in perspective also.
Well, I take from the mayor's, I appreciate the mayor's comments because it sounds like maybe she's agreeing with Lynn some there to use that ARPA money if they haven't gotten some offset for us to use some of that to offset.
I'm responding to the constant criticism of the Riley County Police Department and the budget and the law board and the budget process. And it, it's, it's just continuous, month after month after month. And I, I think that we have an outstanding organization and professionals. We are not a rinky-dink little, little community with a oddball police force. So anyway, we need, we have something to be proud of and I think we need to maintain it. And this, we're not talking about any one issue right now. We're talking generally, so. I appreciate your comments as well, too.
Yeah, Mayor, I agree. There's nothing wrong with RCPD. We got an outstanding, you know, police department. No complaints there. But the problem is, I've, I've always had an issue with the budgeting process being 80-20, city-county, and we can't seem to get that resolved between the city commission and the county. That's really where the, where the real problem is and that needs to be relooked and hopefully we can get to that later. But the immediate issue is, when, when the law board raises the RCPD budget and we end up getting 80% of it, it's exactly as Jason said, the problem is, he can't control it, Ron can't control it. And so therefore, any increase in the police budget is going to decrease, if we want to have a flat mill levy, somebody else's budget in the city. And that's the dilemma. And I, I think with a little bit of work and especially with these ARPA funds, we can probably, we can probably resolve that. But my goal, bottom line, is not to, not, not to throw rocks at RCPD. It's, I just want to make clear, I want to see a flat mill levy and sometimes it's going to be painful to get there. But that's what people expect this year after supporting the, the sales tax and with us getting this extra money. And, and we, we need to just approach it that way. And if it's necessary to take that 2.9 million and spread it out over four years to compensate for possible increases in RCPD budget, fine. And the other thing we might look at to put it in perspective is how much money does get generated indirectly by RCPD through the municipal court?
$800,000.
Well, that's pretty much what this increase is, isn't it?
Down from $1.5 million six years ago.
Six years ago, right. And I understand too, the police director does not like the idea of somebody saying, go give more tickets so we can generate money. That's never been the intent of RCPD, so let me, let me make that clear. You know, I know the current director and the past director would be just enraged if somebody said, you know, write more tickets. So I'm not saying that. But just in their general operation, they are generating some funding and I think that's important to consider.
I think there's quite a few discussions to have in the next few weeks. But I do know if you use ARPA funds, that's a one undone kind of deal. And if you spread it out even, there might be other community needs that we really need to look at. And we still have a lot more folks. We always talk about the transient guest tax. We talk about other types of revenue sources that we have compensating use tax and how we want to allocate some at least. There are some other options as we move forward. And also to see what the special alcohol funds looks like this year. It looks like it's increasing and maybe they'll get what all of them are asking for. Maybe they're not going to be asking for as much because they have been, their holes may have been filled with some of the CARES money or the ARPA funds. So I think there's more discussions to have before we dive too far deep into giving RCPD all the money for the next three or four years.
Okay, I'll say something.
Okay.
Yeah, I like.
Say something, Mark.
Yeah, I, I kind of like the idea of using some of the ARPA money at the one time for the $300,000 to cover that gap here. I guess my, my only real gripe and concern is that there's sort of no accountability on the, on the law board, RCPD budget in the sense of, the, the law board decides it and some of them are cities, some of them are counties, some of them are the public. So there's not really, it's nobody's responsibility to sort of kind of keep that budget under what some taxpayers are concerned is getting to be too much. And we have a great police force and so I, I think the police department can probably justify any of the increases because generally this is a low crime area and they, they, they get the bad guy and, and most of us feel safe all the time. I, I think the only gripe I usually have is, is the, is the end of the year. We, we weren't able to hire as many people. We weren't able to do this. We have excess funds and now we got to spend them before the end of the year. And, and that's the thing. I know that the city manager has commented on that a few times over the years. It'd be nice if, if they end up with 800,000 bucks at the end of the year, at first of November, instead of sort of going on a spending spree to, to burn it down to the, whatever they want to start the year with. It'd be nice if like, okay, let's go ahead and say about saving $300,000 and it wouldn't be effective till the 2024 budget or something based on how that works apparently. But that's, that's all I'm going to say about that. There's, there just seems to be, yeah, there's nobody, you can't, it's just, they're sort of. Yeah, Lynn's the only one who, yeah, sort of keeps kind of trying to do something about trying to keep the, the law board budget and the RCPD budget sort of less than it has, is right, yeah. Could it be a 4% increase instead of a 7% increase or whatever it was? That never seems to sort of, we don't have any ability to control that, which is why it's so frustrating for us. But that's, I would, I would like them to try to, yeah, save some of that money at the end of the year if they didn't spend it all. And hopefully we can kind of recoup a little bit at, at some point in the future so that the mill levy increase wouldn't be quite as big because they had three or four or $500,000 to carry over because they weren't able to spend it because they didn't have the officers, didn't have the overtime, didn't shoot as many bullets or something.
It might be good to go back to elected officials on the law board. Maybe people could consider them more accountable than civilians. Lynn really agitated to get citizens as a majority on the law board and not elected officials. So we flipped and now there's criticism. It's just constant, so there's no real end to this story. But, well, I think we're digressing, so.
Let me, let me comment. Agitated, I wanted us to follow the state law.
We are.
And the state law said we had to have citizens on there and previous to that, we were in violation of it.
We have an attorney general's opinion. I mean, it's a difference of opinion when there's an attorney general's opinion that says that elected officials are citizens for the purposes of that statute. And I know you don't like it, but I can't fix that. So anyway, we're, I, I think it's time to end this discussion, so.
Excuse me, Mayor.
What, yes.
Before you adjourn.
Yes.
We will provide an updated evaluation based on the information we received from the county this week. So you all can have that for our future conversations as well to show how that decrease has impacted that mill levy.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, with no further, we will adjourn. Thank you all.